Welcome to the Committee of the Whole for February 8. The meeting is called to order. I will go around the boardroom and everyone can state their name. And we can start with Joanna.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Good evening, everyone.
Hi, it's Margot. Hello, everybody.
Shinhee.
Shinhee. Yeah, just saying. We're in Committee of the Whole, so it's a lot less formal. We're just going to go around the table and say attendance. So Shinhee is here.
Yeah, I'm here.
Hello, Heidi Ho from High in the Hills. Jean is here.
And Amy's here.
Okay, excellent. So we are... Donna has sent in her regrets. Matthew also has sent in his regrets. And Navid, I'm not sure, but he's away right now. Okay, and tonight on the agenda, we have Shinhee doing the land acknowledgement. So I'll pass it on to Shinhee.
Thank you. Halton, as we know it today, is rich in history and modern traditions of many First Nations and Métis. From the Anishinaabe to the Ottawa, the Haudenosaunee and Métis. These lands surrounding the Great Lakes are steeped in indigenous history. As we gather today on these treaty land, we have the responsibility to honor and respect the four directions: land, waters, plants, animals, ancestors that walked before us, and all the wonderful elements of the creation that exist. We would like to acknowledge and thanks Mrs. Saga of the Credit First Nation for sharing their traditional territory with us.
Thank you. Jean, would you like to move a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Excellent. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All right, seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. If I can remind everyone to please log on to Question so we can keep track of... Oh. Okay, we'll have Kevin take a look at that. All right, while that is getting fixed, we have our first item on the agenda this evening is Leslie Mansfield of the Halton Learning Foundation, and there will be a presentation. Sorry, before you go ahead, I forgot to get the consent agenda. Thank you. All right. Yes, this evening, we have for approval minutes of Committee of the Whole for January 18, 2023. And we also have the order paper. I will put a motion on the floor, be it resolved that the board approved the consent agenda. Amy, would you like to move the motion to deal with the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
All right. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. And now we're up to the discussion items. I was just so excited to listen to you today, Leslie. So first on the agenda is the Halton Learning Foundation, and Leslie Mansfield is here tonight.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? My voice can carry, I guess, without the microphone as well, however. Thank you very much for this invitation to present to the Committee of the Whole. And for those of you who aren't aware what the Halton Learning Foundation is, I'm just going to give a praisey. And I'll be presenting the first few slides. And then my colleague Sheri Armstrong, who's HLF's manager of communications, will be taking over the majority of the presentation just because I'm excited to hear her speak as well. For those of you who aren't familiar, we have been around for about 20 years or so. And we are the only charity in Halton that devotes 100% of its resources to students of the Halton District School Board, about 66,000, depending what's going on in Milton and North Oakville. Our sole mandate is to raise money to be able to help students in need, get what they need, to be able to make sure that they can have quality education, because no child should be going without simply because of lack of resources. We have three main areas that HLF supports, and you'll see them on the screen. We have school grants, we have scholarships, and we have our largest area, which is our emergency funds or our eliminating barriers program. School grants is a program that helps to pay for programs and resources beyond what's provided by the Minister of Education. Scholarships and awards are primarily donor funded. So we may have people come to us who say, "I want to establish a scholarship in my mother's name and my father's name." And then we receive those funds in. And then we help students in post-secondary, whether it's college, university, apprenticeship, whatever path they choose, that scholarship can help them move along. And finally, our core program, which is the emergencies, emergency barriers, this helps students in Halton. And there are 10% of Halton who lives out or below the poverty line. And we keep poverty very well hidden in Halton. You don't see the kids. They are there. They are in every school, every area, and every income bracket. And we want to make sure that they have, that they don't feel disenfranchised, and they don't feel like they're alone. And this is the largest part that we deal with. And now I'm going to give the presentation over to Sheri Armstrong, and she's going to have a few, share some of the details about what we do. Sheri?
Thank you. So I wanted to start with our school grants because that's pretty timely right now. It's a program that we're dealing with at the moment. So once per year in the fall, HLF puts out an invitation to the elementary and high schools across the HDSP, inviting them to apply for funding. So as Leslie mentioned, because most schools will have additional projects or resources that they'd like to implement, but they don't have the budget for, they can apply to HLF for funds up to $1,500 per project. And any school could, you know, apply for multiple projects for their school. The funding categories, as you can see on the slide, reflect many of the priorities of the HDSP. And in a typical year, we'll give out about 100 grants to schools. Last year, we provided close to $170,000, thanks to our donors, for 124 projects at 64 schools. So some of those projects might have been 100% funded by HLF. In some cases, the HLF funding would have just been part of what they needed. But we try to, and I know that schools really like the HLF program because it makes it very simple for them to apply and to get funds. And last year, every project that a school requested funding for was approved. And again, that's thanks to our donors and the fact that we had those funds available. So we're, as I mentioned, this is timely because we're actually right now in the process. Next week, we'll be reviewing all of this year's grant requests. And those requests are adjudicated by a committee of HDSP principals. And in the case of mental health and wellbeing, we also invite a representative from RBC Foundation because they have been very generous with their support of mental health and wellbeing initiatives. And interestingly, almost half of the requests last year, and again, this year, have been for mental health and wellbeing grants. Probably not surprising because, as you probably know, a lot of kids are coming back after so much social isolation and remote learning with a lot of mental health challenges. So the feedback from schools is that they really appreciate the opportunity to bring in some additional resources and tools to help their kids deal with these things. So the feedback has been, about the funding, has been really tremendous. Next is our scholarships and awards. And again, this is timely. I just last week, or maybe it was earlier this week, I forget, sent out to all of the guidance counselors, high school guidance counselors, the awards that are available through HLF this year. So again, these are, as Leslie mentioned, these are funded by generous donors in the community. And they can be a significant source of financial support, but also moral support for graduating students who are going on to whatever path they're supporting, particularly for kids in low-income circumstances. So annually, we disperse between about 65 and 75 awards. And this year, this June, we'll be giving out 70 awards to graduating HDSP students. And the total value of those awards is over $143,000. So there's some significant funds there. The majority of them are for between $1,000 and $2,000, which is still a nice amount. And some students get more than one award, of course. But four of our scholarships are worth between $10,000 and $20,000 over four years of post-secondary education. And those ones in particular are targeted at students who are lower income. And that combined with the fact that, as I'll mention in a minute, one of the things we support through the Eliminating Barriers Fund is post-secondary applications. So, you know, we don't want kids not applying because of $200. So we will cover the post-secondary application. And then they can, you know, apply for a number of awards that we have available. And then, of course, the program that we deliver all year round is the Eliminating Financial Barriers Program. And that is our primarily, our primary focus for fundraising. And that's providing emergency financial support to individual students who are living in those low-income households that are struggling to afford basic necessities, like food, like clothing, school supplies, hygiene items. What are some other things? The post-secondary application fees, as I mentioned. You know, things they need for co-op opportunities, safety boots, uniforms, that kind of thing, school transportation. So all kinds of things. If we can't do it, we really try to find a way to make it happen, whether it's partnering with another charity or reaching out to a specific donor and asking for their support. We really try not to say no. And for those of you who are not familiar with what HLF, what our process is, we do not take requests directly from students or from families. All the requests come to us through an HDSP staff person. So it has to be a teacher, a principal, or a social worker. And the principal is always copied on the request so that there's tracking. They refer the families and the students to us. So this year, the number of students provided with, well, over the past few years, the number has been growing every year, with the exception of 2020, 2021. And that's because when kids were learning remotely, it was really difficult for teachers to identify those kids who didn't have food or clothing. So that number dipped down a couple of years ago, but it's been growing. And so far this year, we've had 1,240 requests for support. That is way higher than we've ever been at this time of year. And we're on track to reach about 1,800 kids by June. Some of the kids we've supported this year, a high school student living in a youth shelter. HLF provided funds for a laptop so he could complete his coursework at home. We've provided clothes and school supplies for dozens of young kids who've arrived with their moms or grandmothers from Ukraine with nothing. And of course, Syria and other places as well. They come with very little, certainly not winter clothing and school supplies. The overall theme for this year is basically a lot more families are struggling. A lot of the requests I've seen, you know, mention specifically that their rent is going up $200 and suddenly they can't afford groceries anymore. So with that, I'll leave you with a few more stories and turn it back to Leslie.
When you, when, when you hear what Sheri's saying about the fact that the needs are going up, it really is dramatic. When people say, "What keeps me up at night?", I'll say, "The price of Kraft singles." Have you seen how the, and it's not 24 anymore. It's 22 slices that are in there. It's the price of hot dogs. It's the price of bread. It's the price of basic necessities that all of us take for granted, that we can afford. And yet you have students in this community in very wealthy areas who are living out of below the poverty line. Maybe they're living in a house, but when you open the door to the house, there is no furniture. There's nothing. And they don't want to feel stigmatized. They don't want to ask for help. So they'll fly under the radar. And it's really, the champions of this process for eliminating barriers are the school secretaries, the principals, CYCs, social workers, custodians, football coaches. They're the ones who see the kids, and they're the ones who identify them and make sure that they get the help. And you'll see a couple of stories up there, thank yous that we receive from parents, from teachers, and also from students. And we are so grateful, the fact that we have so many in our community of Halton who understand the fact that we are funded completely by community donations. We do not receive funding from the federal or provincial government or United Way. We are completely... Was that little thing mentioning that I'm all done now, that little sound? I thought, "That's a little abrupt. I can stop now." Okay, good. So we're completely focused on, I get in my car and I wander around to different areas, and I talk to people and just say, "Would you be interested in helping out HLF?" So that's a little bit about what we do. And we're coming close to our timeframe, as that little sound may have said or not. Are there any questions that you may have for either myself or Sheri Armstrong? We're open for whatever you'd like to talk about in the last five minutes, I guess. Yeah, four minutes.
Go ahead, Jean.
Yeah, I just wonder if you would be able to review for us the sources of your funds and how that may have changed over the years?
Sure. We, I mean, when we first started, we were a department of the Halton District School Board. And then we were separated from the Halton District School Board in 2014. So that funding slowed down significantly, but also increased through our community and increased through service clubs and corporations, community foundations, family foundations. The Ron Joyce Family Foundation is a supporter of ours. The RBC Foundation really bumped up their game in terms of their support for mental health, $50,000 or $60,000. Payroll donations through the Halton District School Board. We're coming into payroll donation month, February. It's the month of love and the month that we want to make sure that people say, "If you want to get on payroll donation," it's a huge, it's a huge support for us. About 150 staff members of the Halton District School Board are on payroll deduction. It'd be great to get 151. But that's where, but that's, you know, so we're open right now. Before we leave, we can certainly take your information before we depart. But this is where we get our funding from, Jean. And we were very lucky that we did receive the cues from the federal government during the highest part of the pandemic, which allowed us to continue all of our operations and everything. But we are a very well-reserved foundation in some ways. We are very well-reserved, and we have some wonderful donors who support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly?
I've been around for a long time, and I was here when there wasn't an HLF. In the early 2000s, it became an idea. And it's been through a few iterations. And I've got to say, I remember hiring Leslie to come forward as the new director of HLF. And she has really made it a going entity that, and is supporting more students than ever. And she has brought all kinds of brand-new ideas in to try and encourage more donors to make awareness. And I have to thank you for that because you've done a phenomenal job doing it. And our students do need HLF. It's a really important foundation. And I just think that the work that you do is phenomenal. So thank you for everything that you all do.
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Carol, you're next.
So first of all, I'd just like to say thank you for everything you do. I did want to ask, do you ever present to school councils or provide information?
Yes, we do. Yes, we present to individual school councils, super councils. All you have to do is send us an email, and we're there. Joanna, I'm going to be at your super council next month. I've been at Jean's, I've been at Amy's, I've been at yours, Kelly. I've been all around. I've been with Margot and everything. So, I mean, I'm, we've been all around. It never sounds right.
All right. Leslie's busy.
Yes.
Okay.
Rephrase that.
I will go to you, Curtis.
Thanks so much, Tanya. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you, Leslie, and thank you, Sheri, and to the entire organization. I've been to about 100 schools so far. And I don't think there's a school that I go to that I don't ask the question about whether HLF is a part of that school community in supporting families and students. And without exception, they say yes. I was at a school today, and you're a big part of that school. So thank you for everything you do. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. It's been a joy to lead HLF for almost, it'll be close to nine years. It's been an absolute joy and an absolute privilege. And we have, we have an event coming up in April, Students in Spotlight. We had it last year. We're having it again this year. It was such a success. We had parents asking, you know, "Well, what's going to happen this year? You know, can my child participate this year?" Yes, you can. So, but it's been a joy. And I've so enjoyed meeting all of you and gaining to know you and everything. And so, thank you. Thank you.
Well, Leslie, thank you so much for presenting this evening and for sharing updated information. But before you go, we have, we have a little something for you. So I am going to pass the mic over to trustee Jean for a few words.
Right, thank you. And on behalf of the Board of Trustees and those who are present here tonight, as you may know, just for over, as we've heard tonight, for over eight years, Leslie has led the Halton Learning Foundation as the CEO. And we should all remember that the HLF is the only charity in existence that dedicates its work to solely assisting the students and schools of the HDSP. And through these past years, Leslie has met very many challenging times in her role as CEO. Two of the challenges that I am most aware of included establishing and working through a year-over-year process to strike a new working relationship with the HDSP through an MOU. This coupled with the implication of a worldwide pandemic, which made charitable fundraising extremely difficult. And this at a time when the needs of our students and schools grew exponentially, made her tenure, made her tenure very, very, filled with a large number of challenges. But in every case, she met them with grace, courage, confidence, and success. In fact, during this time, under Leslie's leadership, the work of the HLF never stopped, and its capacity to support the HDSP grew. Leslie's team helped thousands of HDSP students to participate more fully in their school experiences, ensuring that no student would be left behind. Numerous schools also benefited through the grants that they received to allow them to enrich their programming and resources in order to enhance student learning. It takes a special leader whose hard work, resourcefulness, knowledge of, and knowledge of and how to access community resources, and the capacity to build a team and community organization equal to the task of realizing the vision and mandate of the Halton Learning Foundation. Leslie, you are to be congratulated for successfully leading a team to build the HLF into the strong organization that it is today. The work of the HLF continues to be recognized because of its success in ensuring that all students in the Halton District School Board have access to receive financial assistance for emergency needs and scholarships to support their journey forward. Leslie, congratulations on your plans to retire and all the other exciting plans that are about to happen, as I know of them. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we want to thank you for your dedication to the schools and students in the HDSP. And Margot, I call on you to present Leslie as a token of our appreciation.
Oh, heavens. Oh, heavens. Thank you. Thank you. This is really kind. I appreciate this. It's been a great, been a great time, and I've enjoyed it so much. And I think it was Jacinda Ardern, the outgoing Prime Minister of New Zealand, who said, "Lucky me." And it really has been lucky me. I've been really fortunate. We have such a great group. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie, and thank you, Sheri. That's going to be a hard act to follow tonight. Sure. Joanna has suggested a group picture with Leslie. Leslie, are you, would you be okay with that? Yeah, perfect. Yeah, we can do it here in the middle. Thanks.
So dry those tears.
I got Margot's phone, so I gotta do a good job.
Say Kraft Dinner.
You don't want to need one more.
All right, thank you. Hey, who am I looking at? Amy. Thank you. This was so kind. Thank you very, very much.
Okay, so we'll move back to the agenda. And next up are the administrative, policy and administrative procedures. So Curtis, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Tanya.
I'm Margot for the meeting.
Yes. So what, we still pulling?
Video surveillance. Roxanne is going to speak to it. And then just let them know that the wrong version is attached.
Okay, I just wanted the trustees to know, we have attached the wrong version of the video surveillance AP. But Roxanne is going to speak to it, and we will then get that correct version to you.
Thank you. And Jonathan and I will attack team on this one. So we've done quite a few updates to the process, responsibility, and the, from a privacy perspective, who has access to the video footage, whether it is for the building, video cameras, or for the interior bus-facing cameras. And in terms of the one for transportation, it also has been updated for the process that has been developed in collaboration with the... in collaboration with the Information Privacy Commissioner of Ontario. And I will pass it on to Jonathan to provide you a couple more updates to the procedure.
Yeah, thanks, Roxanna. So, most of the changes you see in the red are accurate. There are a couple of pieces. There is a, trying to find it here, in section one. So, where it talks about, there's a section that's been crossed out where it says, "In the case of a police investigation where a copy is requested." So, when the police want a copy of the video regarding an incident in the school, there's a form they need to fill in, and it has the occurrence number and the date, you know, the date and the range of time, like 8:00 AM to, you know, 2:00 PM or something like that. That's been crossed off. In this version history, that should not be crossed off. That is still in existence. So, there's just, there was just some issues where there were different versions floating around, and we inadvertently attached, not all the changes were captured here. The other significant change, so as Roxanna mentioned, the cameras, just for your information, the cameras are active in our schools, but they're not monitored on a day-to-day basis in our schools. They're only monitored when there is an incident that needs a response and an investigation. And I think I've spoken about this before. The monitors are not viewable from the public. It shouldn't be viewable from the public. So, if you walk into a school understanding at the front counter, you shouldn't be able to see the monitors from there in case there's a vulnerable student or staff member in the building. The admin have access to the camera footage, but they only go in to access the footage when there's been an incident and they need to conduct an investigation. So, nobody sits with the cameras on their laptops, you know, all day long, following kids through the school or staff through the school. That doesn't happen. The other significant change, I'll just draw your attention to the very, very end of the document. And it talks about audits. And so, the board does reserve the right to conduct periodic audits for compliance purposes and so on across the system, just to make sure that the cameras are being accessed appropriately for the appropriate reasons, that they're working, that the administrators know how to operate the cameras, and download footage if they need to, because that's been an issue in the past. And because we don't monitor the cameras all the time, sometimes there can be an outage that we don't know about. There can be construction that cuts a cable or something, and we don't know until you go in and you need it, and now the footage isn't there. So, that last section about audits is going to capture that. But we apologize for attaching some version. But it's not the correct one, but we'll get that updated for the board package, right? Is that correct? Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. We've got two speakers. First is Margot.
Hi. Thank you. Three vice chair, two Jonathan. So, or it might be Roxanna. I'm not sure. So, I'm just noticing that the bus, the signage on the buses, I thought it had changed. I can't find where I found the change before, because at the top page. Yeah. I don't know what page it is. There are no, there are no pages. Page two. At the bottom of page two, it's crossed off that it will have a sign which notifies rather than the equipment is on the board and the video is being recorded. And I thought I had read somewhere that it had changed, but are they still having signage on buses letting students know? If there are buses, if there are cameras on the bus, I thought that was a, that they are being recorded.
Yes, that's correct. So, there's going to be signage on all the buses that have interior-facing cameras. It does mention at the end of that paragraph that the proof signage will be displayed on the vehicles as well. So, I think it just was reworked a little bit. It's crossed off at the top, but it's reworked into the paragraph.
Right. So, I'm just wondering, like, is it, again, so because it's on a bus, and buses have different aged students on it, so will there be, like, a picture of a camera with video surveillance? Just because for children who can't read, you're ticking all the boxes to make sure that everybody understands what's going on.
So, I know the signage is going to be on the door. I'm going to have to follow up to see exactly how it looks and get back to you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
If I could just jump in, usually it's an image of a sign, and then by law, it has to have a contact number, like somebody to contact. Like, there's certain requirements by law that it must have. And I imagine facilities will ensure that it's similar to the ones we have in the schools.
Thank you.
Amy?
Thank you. Right under the very last point, under audits, it says, and I think you need to remove the word "audits" from the first word in that sentence. The superintendent of Education Safe Schools has been deleted or designate. Do we need to not stipulate which superintendent there? Or are we going to say the superintendent responsible for school buses? Or how are we going, like, can't just say the superintendent? It has to be the superintendent with responsibility for this.
So, sorry, through the vice chair. So, as I said, this is a completely accurate version. So, the accurate version reads, "The superintendent of Information Services, or designate, manager of privacy and records, and general manager of HSTS if applicable, reserve the right to perform spot audits of access compliance of video surveillance systems."
Thank you. I'm also wondering, what if the regional internal auditors wanted to do that? Would we allow that?
The regional internal audit manager has responsibility through the audit committee to conduct any audits that are being approved by the audit committee. So, individually, the internal audit manager cannot decide to audit an area, but through that mechanism and reporting to the audit committee, it can determine, here's some of the areas we want to do. And one of them could be this, and they can look into anything that the board has. It will have to follow the process where, because there's no copies, we wouldn't provide copies to an auditor either. They would have to be onsite and go through the processing.
I guess my question was more because we actually specify that audits may happen, and we don't usually specify that in our admin procedures. So, I just wanted to know if this, if what we have here is sufficient, or should we have something in here saying that the audit team may also need to have viewing of this? Do we need to put that in there, or is it okay the way it is?
I would suggest it's okay the way it is because the audit mandate is compliance-related. So, it's in the audit, it's in the Education Act and the regulation that provides them with authority to audit different things. It's no different than looking at employee files. If that is the audit they're looking at, that's their mandate for that particular scope. They would be onsite looking through confidential information because they do have the authority to do so.
Thank you.
Jean?
Yeah, thank you very much. I think I read somewhere in this admin procedure that parents were informed of the notice of collection on a yearly basis. I cannot find that right now on that document, but, and that it's both for the bus and the school. I just wondered, when we have continuous registration happening in schools, if this process happens only once a year, I'm wondering if the parents that come into that school after that process has taken place, how would they know that this is happening? Is there a way of catching those parents up with this kind of notification?
Yes, from my understanding from our privacy manager, there is a form that schools are sent every year at the beginning of the year. So, every student, whether they are already registered or new registrants, receive a form with personal information and use, and that captures language around this as well. So, that's an annual form.
And so, that form also goes to those students registering halfway through the year that have moved into the area?
Yeah, through the vice chair, I think it'd be part of the registration package when the kids register. Yeah.
Sheni?
Thank you. I have a question about the video footage retention. So, we have a policy, so this is for 30 days retention for, within the school board, and one year if it involves any investigation. If this video footage is involved, is requested by outside, external entities, for example, for police investigation, so what is the protocol for retain, archive these footage? And what is the protocol for disposal of these videos? Thank you.
So, through the vice chair. So, we'll use the example of the police. They fill in the form asking for video footage from a school because there's been something in the community or something happens in the school that's serious, like an assault. We burn the footage for them, pass the footage to them. The individual who makes the copy of the footage signs off that it's an authentic and true copy because of the evidence chain. It has to be like, "I made it, not someone else," right? The police are notified. They come, they pick it up, they sign off that they've received it, and then their retention policies take over at that point. So, the third party, once, so let's say the police, have their own retention policies around evidence and so on. And once they are in control of that footage, their retention policies take over, and then we follow ours. So, in that case, we would keep it for a year.
All right. Saying no further speakers. Curtis?
Thank you so much, Vice Chair Rochelle. We're gonna turn it over to Superintendent Flahout.
Thank you very much. And the Student Excursions AP has been redone. We've been working very closely with our, with lawyers to navigate some of those changes. And the major change is really there is about ensuring that our board is protected in the event that there is a cancellation as a result of all sorts of conditions that could be out there. As we know, that there was a bit problematic last time in terms of, you know, the risk for our system when there was a cancellation due to COVID. And so, all of that has been taken into consideration when designing this particular AP. And now, trip insurance, we've worked with our providers as well, is mandatory for trips. So, families would have to purchase that through the trip providers. And the trip providers are aware, they've actually, most of them have built that into their systems already. And they want to protect families because they don't want that issue as well. So, we've had meetings with them to ensure that that's taking place. Those are really, the big changes is around that. The other pieces are just making things flow. We've done the excursion forms to reflect this. We've done the various other forms, the appendices that you see there. All of that will be shared with schools moving forward. Thank you. Happy to have any questions.
Okay, Margot?
Hi. Yeah. So, I just had a really quick question, and I don't know if it's a good question or not. So, I noticed the whole, that for somebody to go on this trip, they have to have a vulnerable screening check. Excursions means overnight. So, there was a differentiation between excursion and day trip. So, if they're on an excursion, is there any requirement for one of the chaperones to have CPR or like basic medical training? I just didn't know if that was something that was considered. I didn't see it anywhere in there?
You know what? I'll look into that for you because I can't recall the detail of whether which certifications that the chaperones would have. But it does specify, you know, depending on the students that go, the types of chaperones that are on there, but certification of CPR. I'll look further into that. I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay, thank you.
Joanna?
Yes, thank you. And my question is around expectations of students. For instance, if they're going on an excursion that involves excursions on water, swimming, boating, that sort of thing, for their safety, what do we expect in terms of their skill set? Swimming ability, for example. How is that asked of the parents, and what kind of specifics are we looking for? Because to one parent, you know, yes, my child can swim, means something entirely different than to another. And I'm just really cognizant of the safety and the risk factors for students.
Absolutely. Thank you for asking that. As a matter of fact, all, any excursion that requires water-based activities, there is a swim test that is required to be part of the process. So, schools would need to arrange for students to have a swim test. Any student that is not successful on that swim test, the school would then work with the, if the student still wants to go, they work with the organizers of the campsite or wherever it is to ensure that the student does not have access to those activities. They have to provide an itinerary to the principal, and the principal has to provide that to the superintendent before signing off, that there's an itinerary, there are actually alternative activities for that student, and they will not be involved in water-based activities. But a swim test is required in order to participate.
Okay. I want to acknowledge that student trustee Cindy has joined the meeting. I'll go on to Jean. You're next.
Thank you very much. I noticed on page four, under little G in red, it talks about trip cancellation and out-of-country medical insurance is mandatory on all excursions that are more than one day in duration. However, the notion of trip cancellation insurance is mentioned thereafter many, 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 many times, but not so much the out-of-country medical insurance that we have indicated through part G to be mandatory. And I wonder if that's just a misstep and that we've missed mentioning that again every time we talk about what is needed. I just wonder if, in your review, maybe if that could be considered. I also noted a number of different lettering or numbering things that need to be corrected, like there's a couple of Bs under number seven. The whole numbering system is a little bit shaky, in fact. And I wonder if manager Carrillo would be, in the end, overviewing or overseeing the actual formatting of this document so that we've got flow and numbering in the manner that it should be for a document of this nature. Like trustee Oliver, I also had a question about the swim test results. I see that there's a lot of things that the superintendent is responsible for, and I wonder where it would say that the superintendent is responsible for receiving documents such as the swim test results. I would think that we would want that passed along, but that may, in fairness, may be appearing in another document. And lastly, I think that the use of the OPAS, O-P-A-S-S-A-E, which is the Ontario Physical Safety Standards in Education, is referred to here, but I think it should appear maybe, I think it should be appearing in the top. It does, but it should be spelled out, I think. I think that would help parents to understand that. But I have a lot of other recommendations. I'd like to just send them directly on because I just had a lot, I just really spent a lot of time on this. This document is so very, very important to me, and I've had experiences with it, and I would like to send those recommendations and not take up any more time. Thank you.
Did anyone want to confirm or acknowledge Jean's requests?
Absolutely. We would be happy to take those.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Amy?
Yeah, I just noted that there's a very extensive definitions section in this AP, and we are in the process of moving all definitions to the appendix in the Policy and Procedure Framework policy. And so, I was hoping that I could count on manager Carrillo to move all of these definitions to the appropriate place.
Thank you to trustee caller through the vice chair. Yes, absolutely. We can move the definitions to the Policy and Procedure Framework. However, what we found with some of the APs in particular that have the definitions, they were helpful for context to be included directly in the policy or procedure. So, the approach that we'll take is to have those terms and definitions both in the administrative procedure and added to the Policy and Procedure Framework for ease of reference.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to acknowledge student trustee Ethan has joined the meeting.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. Apologies for the late joining here.
No worries. Thanks, Ethan.
Thank you so much, vice chair. I'm going to ask Superintendent Frankovic to speak to the next AP.
Thank you. So, we have our assessment and evaluation policy moving forward. So, our policy is driven by a growing success document as it would be in all school boards across the province. So, this has been cleaned up with very minor changes. You'll see the seven fundamentals. the province. So this has been cleaned up with very minor changes. You'll see the seven fundamental principles of growing success to support learning improvement in our schools. As part of specific directives outlined by growing success, we also have an administrative procedure that's closely tied to this policy on assessment and evaluation practices for grades seven to 12. And that AP will also be coming forward in the fall with some revisions, as we are expecting some updates to the ministry's growing success document, which is a 2010 document.
Jean?
Thank you very much. When I looked at this document today, you refer to the under number three, for example, as outlined in growing success, the primary purpose of assessment and evaluation. I think the words and reporting should be in there. Reporting is very evident in bullets number four and six under the objective, and I think it's a miss if we don't include reporting in that as a fundamental element of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Gray.
Margot?
So mine's really quick, and you said something at the very end, and I didn't catch it, but as growing success is quite a long-in-the-tooth document. And the review of this is slated right now for 2027. If the document is updated, which I'm hoping it will be soon, the review will be brought forward too. I think you said that, but I didn't know if I did.
Well, two parts. The AP, that is Assessment and Evaluation Practices for seven to 12, will then receive a fairly substantial overhaul in the fall. And then anything that would need to be revised here as well would be considered at that time.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no more speakers. Okay, so from listening to the different speakers, I understand that there are some outstanding questions that require answers. So will those answers be brought forth to next board meeting? No, so I think Margot had a question of Aiman. I think Margot also had a question of Roxana. So there's just some outstanding information. So that could be brought forward to via email?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. All right. Okay, so just as a reminder to everyone, the APs presented this evening will appear in next week's board meeting under the consent agenda, and the policy will appear in next week's board meeting agenda under action items. Okay, so that takes us to 3.3 on the agenda, which is the 2023-24 Board and Committee of the Whole calendar, and I will pass it on to Manager Jean.
Thank you, Vice Chair. To all trustees, the Board Governance Bylaw and the Committees and Appointments Governance Procedure establishes that meetings are held for the board on the first and third Wednesday and for committee on the second Wednesday of each month, with the exception for school vacation periods and days of significance. But we don't have a complete listing for all of the possible days of significance. So the proposal before you is reflective of a review of all of the Wednesdays for which a board or committee of the whole would be meeting, and looking for conflicts with potential school vacation periods or days of significance. So what I propose is rather than starting the school year without adopting a list of the regular and rescheduled meetings, is presenting this list of days where we have board and committee meetings. So if we look at the month of December, for example, the second Wednesday of the month conflicts with Hanukkah, and so there would be no committee meeting that month, but there are two board meetings. If we look at the month of April, for example, we have the second Wednesday of the month conflicting with Eid al-Fitr, and the fourth Wednesday conflicting with Passover. So there are a few options for rescheduling. So the proposal is to reschedule the Committee of the Whole in April to a Thursday instead of a Wednesday, so that there will be two board meetings and a committee meeting. And if you look at the month of June, on June 19, which is the third Wednesday, there is Il Al Adha, and forgive me for mispronunciation. So the proposal is to have the rescheduled board meeting on the following Wednesday, which would be potentially June 28. Sorry, 2026, thank you. So the purpose of this is for trustees to provide input on these potential days, so that the board can then adopt its meeting schedule before the school year calendar is printed and distributed to schools, and so that all trustees, all staff, and the community are aware of what the dates for the meetings will be.
Thank you, Jean. We do have a speakers list. So just for clarification, do you want us to provide you with feedback during this meeting right now?
If trustees have feedback immediately, I would certainly receive it. If something comes up before the board meeting, then feel free to email. The item as it is before you now is prepared for a board report for next week's board package for its first appearance.
Okay, so I'll go to the speakers list. Amy?
Thank you. Given that we only have one Committee of the Whole a month, and that quite often we have significant amount of business to conduct, I would rather not have a month that does not have a Committee of the Whole meeting. So I would rather us find an alternate date for December 2023 so that we have a meeting in December. Because really, that's each one that we lose, we're losing 10% of our opportunity to have committee meeting. The other thing I wanted to point out is that February 14 is not only Valentine's Day, it is also Ash Wednesday, which is a date of religious significance. So I would I would ask that we not have a meeting on Ash Wednesday. We have it on a different day.
Joanna?
Thank you. I'm looking at the month of June in particular, and I would suggest that we stay away from booking anything in the last week of June, as that is when most of the high school graduations take place, and trustees are invited to speak. And in some cases, the week prior to that, there are also graduations happening at elementary schools, as well as high schools, and trustees would, you know, that's one of their highlights is to be able to attend. Thank you.
Kelly?
Thank you. I was gonna say the same thing as Joanna about the fourth week in June. If we have our if you've already have the schedule of commencements and that kind of thing, then maybe we can see if it there's conflicts. If not, it might be a doable thing. Otherwise, I'd like to say thank you for putting the chart together, because it's great to be able to look forward. So thank you for that.
Okay, I'll put myself on the speakers list. There were I I thought of four for problem, well, not for problematic dates. So with the change in in the term, I think by not having a Committee of the Whole in December, we're going to lose the opportunity to do our striking committee meeting. I would propose that we have two Committee of the Whole meetings in November. That way, we can use the second one that month to do striking committee. So I'm proposing Wednesday, November 22, as the second Committee of the Whole, and then that way it would free up December. Because the second board meeting in December is really late in the month, since December 20. And I know that there are many schools having different activities, and things are getting wrapped up for the season. So would there be any consideration given to instead of having it on the 20th, that perhaps we could have it the third week, maybe on December 14, which would be a Thursday? My third my third suggestion would be in March. We currently have Committee of the Whole on March 20, and a board meeting on March 27. My suggestion would be to reverse those two dates around. One reason, seeing as how we have board meetings on the third Wednesday, why not keep it on March 20? And that way, it would prevent us from having two board meetings back to back. And then that way, we could have our Committee of the Whole on the 27. And then my last suggestion has already been repeated by Joanna and Kelly, so I will I'll just ditto what they said for that one. Thank you. Jean?
I no, thank you. I just took my name off the speaker list because you had such a comprehensive list, I couldn't add anything more. Thank you.
Carol?
I just had a question around the December 13 and the April 24 Wednesdays. Is that based on advice that the board was given not to have meetings? Those are both holidays that span a long period of time. So so the suggestion to move it to any time during those two periods is a no-go, is my assumption. Okay, that's what I assumed when I read it, but I just wanted to confirm that.
It's in the Board Governance Bylaw that we would reschedule all meetings that fall during days of significance. And because some days of significance are several in a row, it's hard to find or squeeze the date in between. So okay, thank you.
All right, seeing no further speakers. Jean, is that do you have the information you need?
If I may just summarize what would change from what's before you now. We're looking at for the month of March, the board would meet on March 20, and Committee of the Whole would meet on March 27. I also understand the need for a committee meeting in December, and the proposal is for the month of November, instead have Committee of the Whole on November 22. So there would still be no committee meeting in December, but there would be two committee meetings in November. And I also hear the need for the last board meeting for the last week of June to be moved up, and propose for consideration that we hold the board meeting then on June 20, which is a Thursday, if the board would be pleased with that suggestion.
Okay, so that so that date might be problematic as well because of high school graduations. Yeah, there are a lot of of we would, yeah.
Oh, no, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, if you can go on the speakers list, and I'll I'll call you out. Margot?
So also, just so, and again, I don't know if it's just my schools, but I do know that some high schools are actually looking at having commencements earlier in the year. Like, so for this year, for Delsen, is in May, just so that they are able to have a place. So I think that looking at that, I think that would be something that we'd have to look at when we get close to that time. I don't know.
Jean?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, have we ever considered, given that near the end of June, we have these conflicts with the elementary commencements and the secondary commencements, have we ever considered that ever holding a board meeting in the late afternoon, say from 2:00 to 4:00, so that we could then get out to the commencement ceremonies?
Would anyone like to speak to Jean's idea? Margot?
So I'm just conscious that there are people that have jobs so that they wouldn't be able to come during the day. It's I think it's a difficult ask, particularly for those that are working.
In summarizing the changes, I passed the February February 14 change as well. So I would propose then that instead of the Wednesday, the Committee of the Whole is then scheduled to Thursday, February 15, to observe the Ash Wednesday. Thank you, Trustee Coller.
Joanna?
So just going back to June, rather than the Thursday, could we look at June 17 or 18, and book that at least tentatively, knowing that once we have access to the elementary and secondary commencement dates, we can then finalize that date? I think typically they happen on a Wednesday or Thursday. I think that's been the practice. Thank you.
To all trustees, June 17 happens to fall with an Eid al-Adha.
So perhaps we can try our best not to have any business for the second meeting in June. Yeah, we'll 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 we will figure something out. But yeah, as long as you know what, I think perhaps what I'm hearing is because we don't know when commencements are, because I don't even know when commencements are this year, let alone a year from now. So maybe it is just a matter of penciling in a date, and if we have to reschedule, then we're only rescheduling one out of the whole year and not a whole bunch. Kelly?
We haven't done it all that often, but we have had meetings in the first week of July, usually because of a late budget coming from the government, and so therefore pushing back deadlines and that kind of thing. And I know no one wants to have a board meeting in July, but.
Amy?
Just to kind of merge two of the ideas that came out, why not have the board meeting in June on the 24, which is a Monday? It's no longer Eid, but it is in the same week that we would have had our meeting and not likely to be on a graduation night. That way, we're not pushing ourselves into July, which nobody wants to do, and which we actually get in trouble for doing if if we don't pass our budget by the end of June. So. Any objections?
Okay, so from what I am understanding, this tentative schedule will come to board at the same time as the school calendar, and then there could be further discussion there. All right, thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda is, oh, Jean again. This time, we're talking about proposed process for making motions. And there are some there is a document that Jean shared with you earlier today.
Thank you through the Vice Chair to all trustees. The purpose of the discussion was really to get trustee input on processes for placing motions before the board. In preparing for the discussion, I thought it might be helpful to provide something in writing, so I apologize that it was given late, but I hope that is helpful. I've laid out a few different ways that motions come before the board in kind of three buckets. The first being motions that are prepared by trustees for a board package. They're delivered by noon the Thursday before a board meeting. I've laid out my understanding of the kind of current and past practice of the board, which is that when a trustee wishes to draft a motion or prepare a motion, they sometimes go to Committee of the Whole first as kind of workshop to get trustee input on the contents of the motion or the contents of the accompanying report or its appendices. That's an opportunity, like I said, for trustee input, but also to determine whether staff input's required, and workshop the changes that go into the accompanying report. Following that, when the report is finalized, then it makes it to the board agenda following that deadline schedule of Thursday before the meeting, and then it appears on the agenda and is And then it appears on the agenda and is considered with the voting provisions in the bylaw, which depending on the subject matter of the report, it would be immediately considered or considered at a subsequent board meeting. Staff reports for trustees' interests follow a similar process whereby staff bring their reports to admin council for senior team input before they hit the board agenda. Similar to the trustee deadline for Thursday at noon before the meeting, staff also provide their reports to the director's office at noon the Thursday before the board meeting for inclusion in the board package. And as I mentioned, motions for both are then voted on with the immediate and deferred consideration provisions in the bylaw. So that's the kind of report motion that comes before the board. Second bucket of motions that appear before the board are the notice of motions. There is a standing section on the agenda for that. And the section is provided for urgent matters or non-material matters that didn't make the deadline for being included in the board package. One thing that I've observed over time is that sometimes the notice of motion section is sort of a heads up that a motion's coming. Other times it's used as a section to place motions that the board would then consider as an agenda item, so it's formally added to the agenda. And what I'm seeking from trustees is input so that we can kind of use that section of the agenda consistently. Just to, I think, help everyone's understanding, the public's, trustee's staff, in terms of how and when decisions are made by the board. I have some recommendations for kind of bringing notices of motion to the agenda. My suggestions are providing the notices of motion in writing, providing the notices of motion in a form that includes the author and the reason for urgency. And I've made a note of which motions would require a motion to waive the notice requirement, depending on if it's just a heads up or if it's introduced for action at the board. That would determine whether it needs a motion to waive the notice requirement. And finally, motions in relation to an agenda item. That's the other form of motion that comes before the board's meetings. These don't require prior notice. It's, if there's an action item and another trustee wishes to move an amendment in relation to that action item, those don't require notice. But I would request for trustees' consideration that motions still be delivered in writing just for the board's clarity. If it's, if it's not feasible to provide it in writing, obviously trustees are in the room. They may not have their devices available. The proposed kind of middle ground for that would be if I would display the motion in Google Meet and in the room by sharing the, my screen as the motion is dictated. And then seeing the motion words before, then the mover can confirm that that is indeed the motion they wish to move. And having confirmed it, a seconder could also second the motion. And to finalize all of that, the motion wording will then be emailed to both the mover and the seconder as confirmation and for future reference. And while it does introduce slowdowns in the meeting, because typing and dictating is obviously, it can be cumbersome and I, I apologize for that in advance. It's helpful to receive the motions in advance wherever possible, or if trustees can write their motions and send it to me, that would help. But the process is proposed if, you know, in the event that it's impossible. So that's a general summary of the buckets of motions and some ideas for kind of a process that we can follow consistently. And I guess the question before trustees is, does this reflect trustee's understanding? What works? What do we stop? What do we start? What do we continue? And if there's any other changes you wish to see in terms of the process for making these motions?
All right, I'll go to the speakers list. Amy?
Thank you, Jean, for encapsulating our practice. That is exactly what we've been doing or we've been trying to do. I would agree that the notice of, notices of motion should not be for talking about motions that will be brought in the future. If someone wanted to mention that they wanted to bring a motion in the future, they could do that under trustee comments and questions. And then ask if anyone perhaps wanted to work with them on it, get some teamwork going there. Motions are not well done when they are written at the table.
Any other speakers? Okay, so I'm going to turn to you, Jean. Did you, did you want to go through it and ask us questions on each item? Or essentially are, like, how did you want to break this down so that you leave today having all the answers? And that going forward, we can be consistent instead of being consistently inconsistent?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I guess I will go through the buckets one by one and just make sure all trustees are okay with the information before them. I hear that the current state of how motions are drafted, that's a correct reflection. All trustees are okay with that. Okay, I'm seeing nods around the room. For notices of motion, thank you, Trustee Collard. I appreciate the affirmation. So the practice is then that the notice of motion section is to introduce new business on the agenda. So in, in the past, I'm hearing from trustee Amos that in the past, it has been used sometimes for the heads up that something is coming, but not necessarily a formal motion. But the understanding moving forward will then be that the notice of motion section will be to formally place a motion before the board, effectively adding new business. And where it's kind of a possibility that a motion will be placed, the trustee questions and comments would be the appropriate section on the agenda for that.
I, I think we're all in agreement with what you just said, Jean.
Yep, thank you. The recommendation in this section is also that notices of motions would be provided in writing through the director's office so that they can be circulated and to capture a record of the meeting, so that that's a requested trustees. It's not, it wouldn't be a change to the bylaw, but it would just specify what, what and how we're doing it. And if all trustees are in agreement, I would appreciate that. Okay? Thank you. Yeah. Okay, that's the ma, the biggest changes, the understanding of how the notices of motion are used and how they're delivered. I also recommended that it come in the form that includes author and reason for urgency. Is that acceptable to the board?
I see all, all heads nodding yes.
Yep, thank you.
Could, could we just say reason for urgency or whether or not it's a material item?
Okay. Thank you. And finally, motions in relation to an agenda item. So a motion in relation to an action item or an amending motion. When a motion is moved this way during the meeting, the request again is for motions to be delivered in writing. And in the case that it's not possible that we go through the, the motion, the motions for lack of a better word, go through the process of displaying, dictating, confirming before the motion is formally moved. And then by moving and seconding its confirmation, I'm seeing. So the request is for trustees to provide their motions in writing to the director's office via email, even if it's during the meeting. And if that's not possible, the trustee who takes the floor to make their motion can just ask to dictate the motion. And in doing so, I'll share my screen, type it out as it's dictated. Once the mover is comfortable with a wording that's in front of them, they will move the motion and then we go through the seconding and confirmation process that way.
Yep, everyone's nodding.
Wonderful.
Kelly, did you want to add anything?
Not to that piece. Are you going through each dot? Is that, because I have a question around, you're saying that they, being under there though, they do have to be, have a notice to waive the rules, right?
Are we? It's both notices of motion and motions in relation to an agenda item. So any motion that's being moved during a meeting, whether it's an amending motion or a notice of motion. Sorry, I'm going to clarify that. So notices of motion should be sent in writing and not dictated verbally, because a notice of motion will require both the author and the reason for urgency or non-material matters. I was speaking about amending motions during the meeting. That would be displayed. So there's no provision, I guess, this is a possible change from current practices. I'm requesting that notices of motion be placed in writing as opposed to given verbally.
I'm, I'm good with that. My, my question is around clarifying the fact that it says that we will be required to still waive the rules when it's under a notice of motion to have it put on the floor, right?
Yes, thank you, trustee Anna. So because a notice that, or sorry, a motion that is not received by the director's office by noon on the Thursday before the meeting, it hasn't met the notice requirement that's in the bylaw. So even if it's delivered, you know, the Monday, the Tuesday, or the day of, or during the meeting, it wouldn't have met the notice requirement that the board has adopted in its bylaw. So anything in that section, even if it's printed on a revised agenda, does require motion to waive that notice requirement in order for it to be added into the agenda.
And so if people around the table feel that there's no urgency to it, then they can not vote to have it and it would just continue onto the next agenda?
Yes, so if the board as a whole doesn't waive the rules, then it would make it to the next agenda, yeah.
Amy?
Jean, would you just please explain to trustees the difference between being a material item and an immaterial item? And why that is also allowed for waiving the rules?
Yep, so in, in the Board Governance Bylaw, the, I think it's 4.5.5A3 where the Board Bylaw provides that the board can waive its rules to introduce business on items that are urgent or non-material. So non-material would be something that has very few consequences. It's a minor change or I, I'm short of examples at the moment, but non-material, it's, it's nothing grave or extensive. I apologize for the lack of words this evening.
The, the way I've heard it explained in past is that it's not something that a member of the public would likely have delegated against.
Does that help, Kelly? Or, oh, no, sorry, that wasn't your question. It was.
I, I wanted it clarified for all the trustees here, so because when we tried to waive the rules at the last board meeting, some people thought it had to be urgent and it doesn't have to be urgent if it's not material.
All right. Thank you, Amy.
So I think I have trustees' feedback and agreement into kind of our practices moving forward for placing motions. I have no further comments.
Oh, thank you, Jean. Okay. And just, just as an FYI, you did see a nice thick package on your desk today, and that's a copy of the most up-to-date bylaws. So it's a good refresher to everyone so that you know what rules we operate under and speaking limits and how to make motions, when to waive rules and all that lovely boring stuff. And if you do see anything that perhaps we as a board can do differently, then, you know, you can always bring a motion to have that item looked at. Okay, so I'm going to see if I can get in one more item before I call a recess. Next up on the agenda, 3.5, delegation topics. And you have for reference in your board package, the policy for delegating as well as the governance procedure. And both myself and Marco will be speaking to this. So here we go.
So currently, under the delegation policy, it says that people from the public can delegate the board regarding issues on the agenda or related to governance. So issues that are for decision, sorry, or related to a matter of governance. It's therefore the policy of the board to welcome delegates during public session of a regular, special, or Committee of the Whole board meeting. So I'm just, I'm conscious that delegations are there to provide voice to the community. And I just want to ensure that trustees feel that the guidelines that we have for the delegations allow for the voice of the community to be heard at the table. So that's really sort of what the discussion or question is about delegations.
I'll look to the speakers list. Jean?
Thank you very much. I had a few thoughts about delegation. And part of, the first thought I want to share tonight is the notion, and it's not in here, but the notion whether we would think about this thought, and that is, when we've had delegations on a decision night, and I go back to the par, and we had numerous delegations on the night of the par decision. Almost as soon as the delegations were done, a little bit later in the agenda, I believe we came up with the time to make a decision. And I felt that it was a disservice to the people who made, who were delegating, because I thought, number one, we as trustees had no chance to research the content of their delegation's package to ensure that there was you know, that everything was accurate in what the people were saying. We had no cha, chance to dialogue, to check their, their, their accuracy on anything. And I, and, and I, and I thought too, that it also lent itself to trying to sway, like, kind of like if you're the last person to delegate, maybe you could have greater influence on swaying. And so I wonder if we would at some point consider that delegations occur not on the night of the decision to which they are delegating to? Just a thought. Is that, I'm not even sure this is appropriate as an idea here.
So, you know that package you got today? In the package, it does speak to that we, we are open to special special delegation nights, so we can actually have an evening that would be dedicated to delegations. So.
But currently, right now, we don't prevent a delegation coming forward on the night of a decision.
But so again, with that, I would think on the evening, if there were delegate, again, so we would know if there were a lot of delegations coming, because delegations have to be in by the Monday prior to the board meeting. So if that were the case, I would think we would then review. But then there's also the opportunity for us to defer the decision.
I have a pertinent point.
Hold one second, Amy. Can I, I've got you on the.
It's to this point.
It's to this point?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Amy.
So the reason why some of our items come to two board meetings is specifically so that people have enough time to prepare a delegation. If, if the board package comes out on a Wednesday and we're meeting, or on a Friday and we're meeting on the Wednesday, and then the decision's going to be made two weeks hence, they, they only have really five days to prepare a delegation if they're going to get to the meeting before the decision's made. That means that most delegations will actually.
That means that most delegations will actually be heard the evening that the decision's made. And the reasoning for that is, is just time. They don't have enough time to adequately prepare a delegation unless, unless they know it's coming. So I, while I, I completely understand your concern, I think that would make it that much more difficult for people to actually prepare a delegation. The other thing is about the delegation nights. We did have a special delegation night, more than one for the par. We've had them for many of our boundary reviews in the past. And they're quite successful because we can hear from a number of people and we can weigh that information prior, days prior to making a decision. And those have been always allowed for the weightiest of our, our decisions. Pars or boundary changes, those schools, things like that have been quite often, those, those nights when we've had those big meetings and we set aside a special evening for that and we hear up to 20, I think, 20 or 25 delegations on those nights. It's, it's mind-boggling, but we don't do it very often, thank goodness.
Thank you, Amy. Joanna?
Yes, I, I support the practice of a special delegation night and I think they've worked really well for those weightiest of decisions. I'm wondering if our requirement to have the delegation be tied to a topic on the agenda is itself not a limiting factor for, for a parent community? Because parents have a lot of, you know, great ideas or things they want to share or concerns they want to raise. And to have to wait for that to appear on agenda, sometimes will never happen, right? So I think we need to be able to open that up so that parents can come, or community members, stakeholders can come and share their views. And the onus is on us to then label it and park it and tie it to whatever it needs to be tied with, you know, to be considered for that topic matter. Thank you.
Kelly?
I'm looking for it and I can't find it, but I believe when we, the ministry did a review of our par process, one of the things they did suggest is we not have delegations on the night of our decision. And that was, it even was even in our, one of our policies that, somewhere that, and that's why I can't find it right now, but I, I'm trying to find the actual review of it and it did recommend we not have delegations on the night of a, of that kind of a decision. So I, I'm trying to find the document. I'll keep continuing.
Amy?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to speak to Joanna's point about items that are not for action. That, that becomes problematic. People may wish to delegate on issues that are not within our purview. If they want to delegate on something that is instruction-related or administratively-related, then we have no purview over that. And so if it's not an action item on the agenda, their delegation to us appears for them to be falling on deaf ears. Whereas what really it is, is that we're not hearing a delegation because it's, it's not material to our work. When we had those delegations, when, when the Bronte Creek project was being eliminated and we had those heartrending delegations from the public asking us to please bring back the Bronte Creek project, Director Miller had made the decision and it was within his purview to make the decision to cancel that program. We heard several delegations and we had to sit there as a board of trustees and then pass the budget, which they were all fervently hoping we would not pass because it wasn't within our purview. So as much as I would love to hear those, those ideas from the public, the best way for them to bring those ideas is by phoning their trustee, by getting involved with their school council, by going to a PIC meeting. There are so many ways for them to bring their ideas forward. When we, when we did that outreach where we asked the, the public, please give us your ideas to build it back better. Like, we do have opportunities. We give the public opportunities to do that. And it doesn't have to be a delegation in order to bring forward an idea.
Jean?
Thank you very much. Just on the notion of practice and improvement of practice or questioning our practices. Recently, we had a young lady delegate our board. She knocked me down, like she was so articulate, had so much to say to our board. I wonder, in this document that I'm reading, I, I don't read how we as a board of trustees respond to delegations. Do we follow up? Do we, I, I don't think we've brought the topic that she brought to the table here back into any of our agendas for review or anything. I, I just wonder what our, what our responsibility is to the people who take the time to delegate our board.
Hold, I've got Margot next.
So I was just wanting to respond to the Amy and Joanna discussion and also to Jean. So in response to what do we do, I usually try to send an email to the people that have delegated, thanking them for coming. Again, with this most recent delegation, I know that, was it Jean that sent a note saying thank you? And can you send us the delegation material? So there's usually a follow-up email from the board. In response to the question about people coming forward, I think, again, when we look at the idea of governance, anyone can submit a delegation to the board. So, but then it's down to us as, Tanya and I, as, and in collaboration with Jean, to look at whether or not it's able to come before us. So I think with that, I don't know that we're limiting, I, what my concern is, my concern is very similar to yours, is that I think delegations are a tool that we are entrusted to use to ensure that we are hearing the voices from the community. To Amy's point, though, I recognize that some of those voices are speaking to issues that we are not under our purview. So it's that, that fine line, but I think that comes down to the decision that Tanya and I at this point in time have to make in terms of, does it fall under a matter of governance? So ensuring that piece, I hope, allows people to feel comfortable in requesting to delegate. And then if it's not a topic that falls under that piece, we're able to respond to them and tell them the, the way forward for them to move.
Joanna?
Actually, I had a thought, but I wanted to share something with you, but I'll save it for trustee questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other speakers? No. Okay, so just as a recap, when requests do come for delegation, both Margot and I, along with Jean, we do go over to see if, how we can put it on to the agenda. So where we can, it makes sense to put it on that agenda, or if it is a matter of governance, we do say yes, please delegate. And then there are some times that they'll, we have a delegation where it's completely out of our purview as trustees. And then we do have the, the delegator go to their trustee or we direct them in the, to the right person. To what Jean said earlier about having delegations and we're trying to make a decision, it is within our purview to, to defer our decision. We don't have to make a decision that evening. So it's up to us to decide whether we want to do any additional research and then defer the motion for two weeks or four weeks later. It's really, it's up to us. And there was one more point I wanted to make and I've lost it. Oh, and there was the, and just a reminder that there are those special delegation nights. So to your point again, Jean, if there's an overwhelming number of people that want to delegate on a matter, we, we do have it written in our, in our bylaw that we will accommodate. And also in the delegating procedure here, Amy was right, there are, we could, we will take a maximum of 25 in one evening. Careful what we wish for. Okay, and, and so that was, that was it for me, unless, so the policy is as it is right now on the procedure. If anyone here feels that something should be changed or something needs to be considered, realizing what tools, other tools we have available, you know, you can raise your suggestion tonight or you can always add another committee of the whole, speak to that. Okay, Margot?
And just quickly also, again, coming back to Jean's point about the delegations happening on the evening. So if there is a decision that's to be made and a delegation comes that is quite weighty or heavy, that we don't feel we have enough time, it is down to us to defer that decision. So I think that's something that we really need to be looking at is if we are getting delegations that are really, we, is making us pause, defer. So think about looking at, well, if this is what we have to think about for a little bit, let's defer to the next time.
Jean?
Yeah, just to that point, sometimes we have decisions to make though that are timely. I'm thinking of the most recent controversial decision we made about the naming of the school in Milton. I, I think the, the school and the principal was being held up if we didn't move forward on that night to give him a name to begin to work in, in his magic in, in getting a school started. But I remember that night having a presentation by one of the potential name, the relatives of the potential name, and how, you know, gut-wrenching it was to hear that after we'd heard a similar presentation from the other name that was in the running. And so I'm not sure to have, to have delayed making the decision that night was going to help. But it's just an example of how when these come and we've got only the headspace time of about 20 minutes to 30 minutes before we're making a decision, is that person feeling that we've honored them and that we've heard them when we make a decision that's totally against what they just made a presentation to us about? It's one of those awkward things.
Thank you, Jean. And I think we all recognize that sometimes we have to make difficult decisions. But that's what makes our role fun. All right, seeing no further speakers, I know I said I'd call a recess, but I know that the next item will be very snappy. And, and after this next item, I will call a 10-minute recess. So next up is Margot and she's going to be talking to forming a committee for the notifications protocol. Go ahead, Margot.
So if you recall, in October, a motion was brought forward by Tracy, looking at how we are ensuring that if there is a special event at a school, we are ensuring that we are contacting the necessary important people to come. So what I would like to do is see if there's any interest in forming a subcommittee to look at figuring out who those important people might be and what our protocols are going to be in terms of when there is a special event at a school, how the information is sent out to various officials across the region. So just checking, interest for the subcommittee, please.
Amy?
Yes, no, I don't have time to be on this committee, but it would be an ad hoc committee, not a subcommittee. Thank you.
Okay, ad hoc committee.
Jean?
Not wanting to see any work in this board being duplicated because it's already being done by somebody else, would this not be something that communications knows all about and is doing already? Do they, wouldn't, wouldn't they already have this sort of check sheet? If it's, if it's a school opening, these people get, you know, invited. If it's a funding thing, these people get invited or informed. Is that not something that we already have in existence here in this board?
So I don't know the answer to that question, but I do know that we have had events at schools that people have been missed. So we want to ensure that we have policy in place that will then be shared with the Catholic Board, with the municipalities, so that they know what we are doing. And again, it's hoping that everybody will follow best practice. And again, this isn't only about ourselves, it's also looking at, well, if this is what Halton District School Board is doing, maybe the city of Oakville will look at doing the same thing. So maybe trustees are included in certain pieces that might have ties to school within the community that maybe we were neglected before. So that's partly what this was about to.
So I just want to clarify something. My understanding, it was also, this motion also came about because there were events through, let's say, city events, like Town of Oakville events or Burlington, Milton, Halton Hills. There were events, events happening that they were hosting and that there was a failure to invite anyone from the HDSB. So perhaps a failure to invite a trustee, perhaps the failure to invite the director or whatnot. So I think the, one of the intentions of the motion was to ensure that public officials knew who to contact, knew who they should invite to these events so that there was a collaboration, not just between the town and our board, but the town and the Catholic Board and the French Boards and whatnot. And I think that was also.
Yeah, it was ensuring those reciprocal agreements so that we are looking at if we are having this protocol to invite people to events, in kind, it would be the same sort of response from mayors or from regional councils. So it was, it was looking at trying to create, leading by best practice. Trustees to be acknowledged. So any takers on the ad hoc committee?
Sorry, Joanna?
Yes, I'll volunteer with, with Kelly. I just, I did want to reiterate that, you know, there are protocols at the provincial and federal level where guests, politicians are acknowledged or introduced or both. And I think there's no reason why we can't expect and do the same at the municipal and the school board level. Thank you.
Jean?
Thank you. It would be really good to have a represent, like a trustee from each of the four areas because then we could, I think, on this committee, then we could liaise with our own mayors, like the, the, the four, like Halton Hills, Oakville, that we could liaison and be that liaison with our, our mayors and our councillors to find out what is in existence and so on and so forth. So I, because I'm mentioning it, I have to volunteer because I'm the only one up in Halton Hills, but I think, yeah, I, I think that it's, you know, I think with people being able to be direct in their own area, we may be able to get to the source faster. And so I volunteer on behalf of Halton Hills, the Lone Ranger of Halton Hills.
Thank you, Jean. And so I think right now there is no one from Milton here this evening. So I think that I can reach out to Donna and Navid and ask them if they want to be involved. But if they're not, I'm thinking, I know, I think it might be, we might find ways to work in collaboration with you being in the north, us being down here, we can bring that middle ground together. So thank you very much to Joanna, Kelly and Jean for volunteering. Look forward for, or look for an invite in your inbox shortly. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we are gonna take a short break. And if you can come back in 10 minutes. If everyone's back sooner, we'll start sooner. Thank you. We are now up to 4.0 committees. And the first item on the agenda is the Trustees' Professional Development Planning. Donna is the chair of that committee, but she is not here. Does anyone else on that committee have an update?
If I could, yeah. We've, Donna has decided to resign from the committee. So we're going to have a meeting on Monday at 4 o'clock to look at how to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Next up is the Governance Document Review Committee. And Amy, you're the chair, and you have an update this, well, you have a presentation this evening, and that's the trustee code of conduct. So over to you.
Thank you. So, um, the committee's been hard at work, um, getting the trustee code of conduct ready because it has to be in to, uh, the ministry shortly. What we did, um, this was one document. It was, was only a policy before, even though it had procedural elements. And, uh, so, um, Manager Carrillo teased out the bits that were the what and the how, and created two separate documents. And then the committee, um, gathered together, I think we've had four meetings, um, to review this. And, um, we simplified some of the language. You'll find that, uh, it's, um, much easier to read. There are very few actual changes. If you open the conduct, um, policy, um, you'll find that, um, really, the, the only change there is the last sentence of the third paragraph under policy. The phrasing there had said, "A code of conduct contributes to confidence in public education and respect for the integrity of trustees in the community." And, um, members of the committee felt that that phrasing was a bit awkward and, um, actually repetitive compared to what had been already stated in, in the policy statement. So we, we reworded that to say, "A code of conduct fosters a sense of confidence in the integrity and transparency of the role that trustees have in the HDSB and broader community." It essentially says the same thing, just, um, a little bit more elegantly phrased. Then, of course, we had to, um, add in there that if this is pursuant to the Education Act and which section, um, and the definitions, um, in the definition sections are being moved to the policy and procedure framework policy, as is our practice now. Then, as you go down through the policy, you'll find that the only other change was that the acknowledgement and undertaking now includes a date, and it includes the policy, the governance procedure, and the board bylaw. So there's very few changes to be made in there, but every single word in there was reviewed. And if you have any questions on the policy, please do let me know. Margot?
Margot, so it's not, I don't really know this on the policies. Actually, and I realize I should have asked it before, and it's actually probably a question not only for yourself, Amy, but for Manager Jean. I seem to recall a while that we started to talk about the procedure that happened when we change a policy, so that we make the changes, they come to the committee, then they go to legal for confirmation. Is that sort of still the standard practice, that this will come to comm- or to board next Wednesday? And then from there, and including the policies we talked about earlier, which were the other ones, they then go to legal and then are confirmed, or vice versa? I just remember that was a step.
There's, that, that, that step is taken in many cases. In this case, the change to the policy is so small that I don't think we need to go to legal. It was all that we've really added. The only addition there is the, um, reference to the Education Act.
Okay.
There's no other change in there, and we do not send administrative procedures.
So the ones that we heard earlier?
No, we do not send those. Those are procedural.
Okay.
Jean?
Uh, staff do consult with legal when they're drafting-
Oh, okay, okay. We don't send them staff- Thank you, I was just checking because for me, those were pretty important policies. So thank you. I just wanted to double-check that I hadn't been with.
I knew, I knew that we didn't send them. I didn't realize that staff did. Okay, thank you. So that's, um, that's it on the policy. If you want to go now and look at the procedure, it's a longer document because there's many procedural elements to doing one of these. And there's more than one way of doing one. Oh, I opened the wrong one. We have a lot of things in our, in our, uh, agenda today. Okay, so, um, you'll see that this, the same, um, changes have been made. Oh my gosh, I still opened the wrong one. How am I doing that?
The, the link was duplicated for the governance procedure and the policy on the published agenda, so I will correct that.
Oh, thank you. I thought I was doing something wrong.
I just realized that the link was, was duplicated. So I can, uh, I can send the governance procedure link to trustees by email.
Thank you.
If that's helpful.
She's sending us a new link. Okay, now I'm looking at the right thing. So we see the policy statement is the same as under the other one. The, the first thing you'll see in yellow there is the addition, which was put in place by Manager Carrillo to, um, add in the, um, requirement for trustees to review the code of conduct and the board bylaw before taking the oath of office, sign and acknowledge, and that we must review the code of conduct every four years. So those are the legislative requirements there. Then, under identifying a breach of the code, we found the language very convoluted and, and not very straightforward. So we took an approach to making the language simpler. In, in this version, you'll see it says, "The chair who will determine whether or not an inquiry is required." There was a lot of complicated language, um, in there that made it so difficult to understand that we had to, we had to spend quite a bit of time actually working on this particular paragraph to make sure that it made sense. We, we feel that we got it to a place where it made good sense. If anyone has any question on 6.1, please let me know.
There are no questions.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 6.2, we've added in, or if the complainant is the chair. And the reason why we've added that in was because there were two separate items, one saying that the allegation of the breach by the chair would be, um, modified to read vice chair, alternate, or committee of the board. And then there was another item that said if the breach, if the complainant was the chair. So we put them both together in the one, so that it wasn't repetitive, and, um, made it a little bit simpler that way. Under 6.3, um, any allegation of a breach of the code requiring an inquiry must be brought to the, to- to the attention of committee of the whole in private session, no later than six weeks after the breach comes to the attention of the chair." So that would be the chair bringing it to the attention of all trustees in private session. If the chair decided that a breach did not require an inquiry, then it would not come. And then, if we move down to 8.2, you'll see a lot of strikeout there. There was, again, a lot of complicated language in there, which has been simplified to, "The chair shall meet informally with the named trustee to bring the allegation to their attention and discuss potential remedial measures." We didn't like the phrasing "to correct the offending behavior." We thought that that was almost judging that the trustee was guilty before that having been determined. We wanted to gentle the language. We didn't like the language referring to the accused trustee. It just sounded too legalistic and kind of scary, so we wanted to gentle that language. In 8.3, "Remedial measures may include," we took out, for example, because it seemed redundant, "may include a warning, an apology, and the requirement of the trustee to engage in the successful completion of professional development training." And then, again, where it says, "If the chair and the trustee alleged to have breached this code," those six words have been replaced with "the named trustee." So it's a lot gentler language and a lot fewer words. Just make things a little bit easier for people to read. When you're reading these things, especially when you're about to take the oath of office, it can be a daunting document. It can look very scary. And we don't want people to view our code of conduct as a scary thing, but rather as a guide. Then you'll see a few other of those sorts of changes to alleged breach, because in some places it said alleged, and in other places it just said breach. And you can't quibble. It's either one or the other. So it's alleged until it's been determined that it actually happened. Under 9.3, it just said "in an election year." And there's lots of elections that have nothing to do with trustees, so it needed to say "in a municipal election year." "A complaint regarding a trustee who is seeking reelection shall not be brought during the period commencing two months prior to Election Day." And again, there was an inconsistency in language. We used the word expiration period because it had been used through the document in other places, whereas in this place, they didn't use the word expiration. So we wanted to make sure that the language was consistent. Then, under 13.2, you'll see that "Trustees shall consider only the findings in the final report when voting on the decision, and then in brackets, 'and sanction if any,' because they don't have to bring a sanction." So it had previously just said "if" and "and sanction," but trustees might decide not to bring a sanction. So that opens that up to being aligned. Under 13.5, again, a lot of extra words in there that really didn't need to be in place, and so we simplified the language. And it says, "A public board meeting instead of a meeting of the board, and the vote on the resolution shall be open to the public." Just calling it a public board meeting accomplishes the same thing. And there were a couple of places where it just said the board and not the Board of Trustees. So we wanted to be clear, the difference between the HDSB and the Board of Trustees. Under 14.3.1, this was referring to the trustee's right to appeal the decision, but it didn't have the word "appeal" in it. So we added the words "to appeal." And then the section "reconsideration," didn't include "the board of trustees shall." It just said "consider any submissions." So we've added "the board of trustees shall," so that it's a proper sentence. And that brings us to the end of the document. So you can see, no substantive changes, but simplification of the language and clarity have been added. And it doesn't seem to matter how many times we go through these documents, we always find ways to add clarity. And this will be coming to the board twice, so there's more than just tonight. If you find you have questions that you didn't think of tonight.
All right, I'll look to the speakers list. Jean?
Yeah, thank you very much. I've been with one ear on Amy's presentation here tonight, but also I was Googling just a search on the OPSA trustee code of conduct. And I just wonder how close our document mirrors the template that OPSA developed for all school boards with regards to code of conduct.
That's where ours began. We used their template when we first created our code of conduct, and we haltonized it a little bit. And then this turnaround, we turned it into a policy and a procedure. The OPSA one is a single document, and ours separates the procedural elements from the policy elements. So those are the two biggest differences. We've also, in our document, of course, we refer to the Halton District School Board, things like that.
So just a point of question here. There would be nothing significant, then, that would have been not included from the OPSA document? Like, we haven't totally taken a section out or anything? It's pretty much as-is, but just haltonized. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. You have to remember, this is the third iteration we've done of these documents. And so the first time around, we pretty much just took what OPSA gave us, put the word "halton" on it. And so every time we reviewed it since then, we've, like this time around, some gentling of the language, things like that, just to make it so it's not quite as scary when you look at it.
Okay, seeing no further speakers. As Amy said, this will be coming to next week's board meeting, so that is February 15th for its first appearance. And then we will be voting to adopt on March 1st. Okay, thank you, Amy. Next, we'll move on to the board self-assessment committee, and the chair is Kelly. Kelly, do you have any updates?
No, we haven't had a meeting. I'm going to be planning one very shortly.
Okay, thank you for that. I have one question. So with the board self-assessment committee, that first meeting, will that be establishing the goals for our board? Yep?
Sorry, about the process, about how we want to go about doing that as a board and that kind of thing, yes.
All right, thank you, Kelly. Okay, we're going to move on to other committees, and I do want to recognize that Navid has joined the meeting just in time, because he's actually up next with the Jean on the agenda, who will be presenting Inspire Awards, some training. So off to you, Jean.
Thank you very much. And just by way of an introduction tonight, in the folder that everyone would have had a chance to look at, thank you, Jean, and also on the agenda, there were links to the admin procedure, the government's procedure, and the board policy. When I did an overall review of all of the material that's in our Google Drive, there's lots and lots and lots of documents that would show our journey through the creation of Inspire Drive, some of the changes that we've made, some of the cleanups that we've done, and so on and so forth. If someone was interested to put a motion or sort of a nomination forward, on the website, they would find info on who the award honors, how to nominate someone, how to submit an awards nomination form with links, and also the Inspire evaluation criteria, as well as lists of individuals who have received the Inspire Award. So there's fulsome data, I'm very happy to share, on our website about the Inspire Award. And that's many thanks to, over time, the work of Susan Thrasher and those before her who helped to make sure that we were well represented on the website. Also, the communications department, of course, had lots to do with that. And so also on that website are Inspire Award facts. And so our presentation tonight is going to be broken into probably my overview right now really quickly, then Navid's review of the evaluation criteria, and a little bit of a talk on where we're going from here. So just as an overview, who's eligible to be nominated? You would have read that if you had had the opportunity to read the policies and procedures in place, but it's any individual or group who has supported students in the Halton District School Board. To date, we've had custodians, bus drivers, crossing guards, committees, a dental office. I think a dental office came one night. We've had all kinds of different groups, community groups, in-school groups, students, and so on and so forth. And so, as we had intended, this award is all-encompassing. It is for, it can include staff, students, parents, volunteers, and members of the community. Who's ineligible? Well, the Director of Education, the superintendents, the associate director, and all of us trustees cannot be nominated, nor can we nominate people. Nominations, though, can come from any stakeholder associated with the Halton District School Board. And we typically get nominations from students, from colleagues, staff members, from volunteers in the community. And you know, I'm very pleased to say a lot of parents also nominate individuals as well. How often can an individual group be nominated? They can be nominated more than once, but can only qualify once a year for recognition. Where will the award be presented? Well, as you know, you've seen it in person right here, either at the board through a board meeting, or at the location of choice of the individual, usually the school in which they work or in which they attend. Deadline for nominations? There is no real deadline. We do gather up all of the nominations at the end of the month. We review and evaluate at the beginning of the month, and we just finished an evaluation procedure. Thank you very much to those people that were able to contribute to that. And as long as we have three trustees evaluating the nominees received, the nominations received, then we have the ability to make a decision and move the materials onward. And last little piece that I wanted to review is, can someone who has received an award from another educational organization or professional group be nominated? And we would say this, the preference for the Inspire Award will be to recognize individuals or groups who have not been recognized by others for a given action, activity, or approach. That is, we're looking for unsung heroes, those who have gone above and beyond. And now I'd like to turn it over to Navid. Navid's going to review the evaluation criteria. We have four main sources of evaluation. He's going to just give you a high-level overview of what makes up those four. Navid?
Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to go through the Inspire Awards evaluation criteria. We have to have the nominee's name and the nominator's name. And the Inspire, okay, sorry. The criteria is, number one is caring. Should show the nominee is fully engaged in student well-being and success. And number two is initiative. Do I have to, Jean, do I have to go through the score?
I'll be doing that just as you end your four sections.
Okay. So number two is it's initiative, shows the nominee started or continued something that is above and beyond the usual. In the case of continuation, the initiative should include a strategic and purposeful change to the approach, or methodology, or the process, or the procedure, or the activity. And innovation and creativity is the third criteria, shows the nominee tried something completely new, or put a new twist on something tried and true. And lastly, it's inspired others, and should show the actions of the nominee had a ripple effect and inspired other people, too. So only those receiving a score of nine by consensus or higher will be considered for an award. That means they'll have to achieve at least a score of three for at least two categories. So that concludes the criteria.
Thank you, Navid. Yeah, thank you, Navid. And as you would have seen recently, the link to the evaluation page is sent to everyone. When you go aboard the link, at the very bottom, there's a tab. If you hit the tab with your name on it, it allows you to see the nominee information, and it has the boxes in which you would put your score. And as Navid has suggested, because there are four categories, each individual gets a score of zero to three in each of those categories, and only scores nine or above are considered to move forward in being successful. And you have to have at least three trustees in the evaluation process that would have scored in that way. I want to just review what happened this week. We had several nominees that came in that just didn't have enough information. And so there's an area where you can put a comment, and you can add the point, "Need more information before I evaluate." To that end, what would happen then is the information goes back to Susan Thrasher. She will attempt to reach out to those who put the nomination in, and sometimes we hear back from them with additional information that allows us, if the timing is right, to be able to complete a second round of evaluations on a particular nominee, and perhaps see our way forward to supporting them in making that, in being successful and being awarded the award. You would gather from what Navid has covered tonight in terms of the four areas, the caring, initiative, innovation, and creativity, and inspired others, you would gather that those four areas, there's got to be a little bit of a sliding stick, because as we look at the nominees, some of them are students, some of them are community members, some of them are staff. And it's always important to really recognize whether the person's, you know, their opportunity perhaps to fulfill all of these categories, and to take that into consideration when you're completing the evaluation. This is a really high-level overview in light of the time tonight. I don't want to spend too much more time. However, I would say this, Navid and I, in our discussion on Monday night, agreed that through recent experiences, there's been lots of chatter and talk about where are we heading, because we need to maybe look at how we're doing this process. And so to that end, I have written that finally it's a good time to review aspects of the Inspire Award program. We've done that in the past, where we've had an ad hoc committee that sits usually with Susan Thrasher, or whoever has been from the front office, to say, "How are we doing? Do we need to rejig or tweak anything?" To be very efficient and to be mindful of all of the work that this creates for Susan Thrasher and others that help her with delivering this. So because I have a discussion of what's best, the best way to honor individuals would be purposeful right now, especially in the new reality of many more individuals being nominated. I would propose an ad hoc committee or group of trustees to come together with Susan Thrasher to discuss various aspects of the Inspire Awards program, with a view towards addressing concerns such as the time it takes to make presentations, the nature of all aspects of the presentations, whether we read everything here or just the names, and so on and so forth. Time is a huge issue. We took 18 minutes the other night to honor 14 people, but we only had four people here in person. If everybody had turned up in person, it would have been a different story. And so, you know, one of the suggestions was, well, do we have to do them all in one night? Could we have Inspire Awards Part One, and then Part Two in another board meeting? We have to be mindful of the business of the board in being able to, you know, bring our focus and move our agenda along. And so I think an ad hoc committee, maybe to have a frank discussion about what are some of the options we could consider as we move forward. Through the student trustees, I have to say, I think they've been the ones who have really kick-started a renewed interest in nominations for Inspire Award. And I'm really thrilled about that. However, in and of itself, with all of that success, we've become a victim of our However, in and of itself, with all of that success, we've become a victim of our success, perhaps. And I think we need to take the time to address it and maybe bring forward, in my last point here, that this ad hoc committee would look to bring some recommendations forward to the entire board of trustees. And we would look to the entire board of trustees for their ideas on what we might talk about in that ad hoc committee. So I would propose that we have an ad hoc committee just to, you know, look at what we're doing, the process that we use, is there anything we could do differently? And to collect from all of the board their ideas as we have those discussions with Susan. I think it's a healthy thing for us to do at this point. And I would be, Naveed and I would both be so honored to head that up and work with anybody that would work with us to sit on that ad hoc committee. And that is our presentation for tonight.
Thank you, Jean, and thank you, Naveed. I'm going to look to the speakers list because I know there are some hands going up in the air. So if you want to be part of the committee or if you want to ask a question, please put yourselves on the speakers list. And I will start with Amy.
I'd like to be on the committee, please.
Joanna.
I would be happy to be on the committee. And I just wanted to acknowledge Jean mentioned our student trustees. Ethan and Cindy certainly have done a really great job promoting the Inspire Awards with the Senate. And the senators are super keen to share that information. So there's great interest in our schools.
I might just put out, extend also an invitation, of course, to those trustees who are not here tonight, but also our student trustees for their voice on that ad hoc committee.
And I'll put myself on the speakers list. So listening to you speak, Jean, I had some ideas. But I will save all my ideas and suggestions because I'd like to put my name forward to be on your ad hoc committee. And, okay, so yes, I'd like to be part of that committee. This is a question for Jean. Do we need to create a motion to create that ad hoc committee to put that on the? Yep? Yeah, okay. So Jean, Jean could put that motion forward tonight to create that ad hoc committee? Or she'll type up the motion to follow our new procedures?
Yes, so as discussed earlier, the motion can be delivered tomorrow for the board package next week because it's the board that makes the decision to form its committee.
Thank you.
All right, okay, thank you. And I think Ethan had his hand up. Is that right, Ethan?
Yes, sorry, I'm not logged into Crest Ron right now, but I just wanted to briefly comment. And I'd be more than happy to join the committee when it comes to Inspire Awards. I know there's a lot of engagement through the Student Senate. And I think there's some ways that we can make it, you know, a lot more accessible for our students and help them improve the application process. Because I know we've had some struggles when it comes to providing enough information for trustees to make their decisions. So Cindy and I would love to join that process and, you know, continue that conversation on how we can improve Inspire Awards. As even last night at our Senate meeting, we had some questions about the Inspire Award forum, which I'm going to connect with you, Jean, off-meeting about. So, yeah.
Thank you, Ethan.
All right, so seeing no further questions and comments, I, that brings us to the Director's Performance Review, which will be in private session. So we will now be moving into private session. Yes? I'm almost there. Joanna, would you like to move a motion to go into private session?
I shall move.
Are there any objections to moving into private?
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, so seeing none, we are now in private session.
Thanks, all. Have a great night.
Night, Ethan.
Thank you, Ethan.